We will, I will call to order the City of Dunsmere Regular City Council Meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And we will move into the flag salute. One second. To Ms. Green. And so I will say the Pledge of Allegiance for us today. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic. For which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you. Well, now move into roll call. One second, let me get Wendy unmuted here. Zoom is apparently a little slow today. All right, Wendy, roll call.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Art.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Present.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Mayor Lucchese.
I am present, thank you. All right. We'll move into, we have no special presentations scheduled for today, so we will move right away into general public comment. So this time for members of the public to address the council on an issue that is not on the agenda, comments about our special presentations, which we had on today, or if anyone has any comments related to the consent agenda, which I have shared that with every everyone here today on our consent agenda is motion election consolidation on hand for Tim Holt. One second. Tim, you're unmuted, and so, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I attended via Zoom the last Tuesday's June 8 Finance Committee Agenda. By the way, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. And I just, I'm sorry, I attended the, yeah, last Tuesday's Finance Committee meeting, and I noticed the agenda for this coming, I believe it's Monday's Finance Committee meeting for June 8. And my understanding is we were going to discuss or rediscover grants for community organizations, but it is not on the agenda. So I'm hoping maybe when Matthew or Peter discusses the Finance Committee meeting, they'll explain when we're going to hopefully have a decision on the community grants and also when the City Council will be discussing this. So that's my comment, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll get to addressing that in committee reports and staff comments. Are there any other individuals who would like to give a general public comment on an item not on the agenda or an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to move us past general public comment and we'll move into staff and member comments. This is the time for city staff and council members to present comments on individual activities or ask questions of staff on items not on the agenda. So I'm actually not going to start with staff today, I'm actually going to start with Councilmember Brian if you want to address Tim Holt's question on the community grants.
Certainly, Tim. And I believe the Finance Committee met Monday and discussed the budget in its entirety and had a Tuesday meeting dedicated to the community promotion funds applicants. And both need a lot more work to be done, so we should update that agenda for Monday. My hope, although we weren't able to come to a consensus after a very long meeting on Tuesday, my hope would be for the Finance Committee to have their recommendations done at that meeting coming up here Monday. City Council won't be meeting for a regular basis for another two weeks from today, and I imagine that's when this conversation would go to council, although that's not agendaized yet.
All right. All right, thank you. And then do you happen to have any other comments while you're here?
No, the Finance Committee's met, I think, three times since last council and has been working on the budget. And there's a lot to discuss there, but I'll save that for committee reports.
All right, thank you. I'll move us to Councilmember Deutsch, do you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, ma'am. The first thing I'd like to do is compliment the Finance Committee. I've heard, well, first of all, the very fact that they opened up the applications for the community development funds the way they did was a real step in a great direction. And I've heard back from two different groups that participated, both the Chamber and the Resource Center, both felt that there was a real constructive dialogue with both organizations and the committee. They came away very pleased with the level of, you know, just the commitment to trying to do their best to work with them. So I just want to compliment the Finance Committee, all the four members of that for their work on that. Above and beyond that, I just want to make clear that from my personal standpoint, and I know that there's a lot of discussion about this, but I just want to state very clearly that I believe that everybody in the city should be wearing a mask when they're in public. I'm really disappointed it's turned into a political thing, but from my standpoint as a retired naval officer, somebody who's been, you know, marinated in science and technology my whole life, it's very clear to me that lives can be saved if both people on either end of the conversation wear their mask. So from that standpoint, that's all I have, and we're working together both with the Chamber and with the Resource Center to get us all through this, and I'm confident we'll get through this and make it better on the other side. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Deutsch. Councilmember Kaisler, do you have any comments for tonight?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to help me clean up the cemetery over Memorial Day weekend. I understand we had some issues, but we got it cleaned, and I had a lot of people tell me, I had a guy tell me in the hardware store how beautiful our cemetery was, so that made me feel good. And again, I want to thank everybody that came out and helped participate during the cleanup. You know, that's about the only thing I have. I noticed a lot of people came this weekend, there were a lot of people going to them falls and still trying to figure out a way how we can capitalize on that, make a little money on that somehow, but with, other than that, that's about all I got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Kaisler, and thank you for cleaning up the cemetery in time for Memorial Day again. And I've also heard that it looked very lovely, and people really appreciate that, so thank you, and.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, if I could also just jump on this and say that, I don't know if most people realize, but the person who puts up the Christmas decorations of Christmas and the flags for Memorial and Fourth of July is Big Dave and his crew, that's every year, that's what he does.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move now, Councilmember Art, do you have any comments for tonight?
Two items. One comes out of the Finance Committee meetings that the Vice Mayor spoke to and will speak more about later. In our early budget deliberations, especially the community grant program, we have been greatly aided as a committee by the visioning exercise that we started.
Hey, Peter?
Yeah?
We're having some problems with your audio, you have kind of like a, for lack of a better term, like an alien, like.
Yeah.
Could you maybe try calling in for your audio again and maybe using your phone?
Yeah, skip to someone else and I'll dial back in.
Okay, great. All right, I'm going to move us over to City Manager Yu Haas, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Art and myself. There we go, sorry, go ahead, Todd.
Okay, thanks. So first off, given the George Floyd situation, I contacted Sheriff Lopey and asked if he would put out comments about the death and what they are doing in terms of their practices, and he came back with a long response, which you can find on the city's website. It's a, it's pretty long, but in, I really hope that folks, if there are things that they would like Sheriff Lopey to respond to, please reach out to him or reach out to me and I'll get the comments to him. There is a reminder from Clemmons Waste Disposal reminding folks not to overfill bins and enclosed animal waste, ashes, and sawdust, as it's a health hazard for the people picking up their stuff, and that there are additional bins available on request through Clemmons. Next, Head Creek Falls, as you all know, is open again, and the last thing I have is there appears to be an expansion of community development block grant funds that hit other entities that haven't been eligible in the past, including funding for libraries that we're looking into.
Right? Thank you. And our Finance Director Blake would like to remind everyone to call City Hall for refuse requests, like extra garbage stickers or cans, so thank you, Blake, for the reminder. Peter, did you call in by chance?
Is this better or worse?
Well, I haven't unmuted your phone yet, are you 604? As your first?
I am 2355.
Okay, I'm going to unmute that phone and rename it, so I know who you are, so try just talking into your phone.
Maybe you should mute his other.
Yeah, I'll mute your other one. All right, go ahead and try and talk, Peter.
123.
Still echoing, but it's not as demonic. So I think.
Did you get that on the record, Wendy? Did you get that the minutes, not demonic?
So, so Peter, if you want to go ahead, I think it'll be bearable with the current echo.
No, and as soon as I'm done, I will try to get off of the Zoom meeting audio. So I wanted to say that the visioning exercise is very helpful to the Finance Committee, especially on the aspects of the grant program for the communities, groups. And so one of the criticisms we got from the Library Committee is it's an incomplete look at the community's desires, and it didn't go to renters, it was pre-COVID, and I take all of that to say it's a very important initiative, but do we need to send out an updated survey as we work through the budget? And then the other item is, I hope you guys have had a chance to see the waterfall in the community garden, and there is going to be a small dedication ceremony tomorrow at 11:00. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to move into my general comments. So in light of what's been going on in the United States, I've been dealing with this quite a bit, you know, with my job and then also serving as Mayor for the City of Dunsmere, but I also have a lot of friends who live in the Minneapolis area, who I've been in a lot of contact with since I'm from the Midwest. And really, it's been a lot of anxiety, and frankly, just pure sadness for what's going on in the world. And I've taken it upon myself to investigate a lot of different options that we have as a city to become proactive to address the inequalities that happen within our policing system, as well as within our own community engagement system. Even if we aren't predominantly, or even though we are predominantly white, you know, it's advantageous for us to look into solutions to improve the situation because it benefits everyone. And there's many people who have been left behind, either on purpose or by accident, and we need to really start focusing on that. So I've been, I've been looking at some policy documents that I'm going to be sharing with the city manager, and I would, I'm going to be pushing for measures to add to our next police contract, which takes these things into account. I can't speak on behalf of the other council members, and this will have to be an item that is up for discussion, and so I don't mean to make any promises on what the city's collective effort is, but as my own personal effort, I think things need to change. And I, I'm sad that it took something so tragic to make this change a priority. And it's really just, it's been a long week. Going to be a lot longer, and we just need to, we need to do better. So thank you for allowing me that time to speak on that. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Pride Month and hope people are educating themselves on the Stonewall riots, which included a lot of people of color pushing forward the LGBTQ+ agenda, as well as the priorities to protect those individuals as well. So it, I'm very somber today, I don't have a lot of energy, but I do still have some hope that we're going to get better. So that's what's been going on with me right now. And I appreciate my council members that I serve with and all of the work that we've been doing, I think the Finance Committee, I think our Planning Commission, I think our city staff. It makes, it makes doing this job for the City of Dunsmere better, and I appreciate that. But we're going to, we're going to keep going, moving forward, and I'm going to be presenting some information in the future on how we can be better allies to people of color and people who are not like us, and welcome them into this community, because that's, that's really what Dunsmere is, is about welcoming people into the community and not shutting people out. So I would appreciate any, any comments or insights people have that we can get better, and to please reach out and let us know about that. So that, that's, those are my comments for tonight. I think the only other thing to inform the City Council on is that we had a fairly successful meeting with Union Pacific to discuss the Moss Brae Falls project, and they are moving forward with getting a contractor in the area to assist with the engineering oversight for the project on the Union Pacific side. We're also working on agreement language to take a look at what we're going to do moving forward. So it was successful, and we have some actionable steps that we're going to be working towards. And I feel very good about the process so far, and we will continue to keep everyone involved. The plan is to have a community-oriented, open comment event to discuss Moss Brae Falls with everyone else. We've just have a couple of administrative things that we need to take care of to begin that process and make sure we're moving forward. But I was very hopeful to have a project manager from Union Pacific on the call who's supportive of our project, who shared with us that Union Pacific is supportive of the project and wants to move forward with us in good faith. So we're going to continue to work on those action steps with them. So please look out for that when we start hosting that. And other than those couple of items, I have nothing else to add right now that I can think of. So I'm going to move us into our next item, which is item number six, Finance Committee Reports, and I believe the only committee, oh, I'm sorry, there's also a DPAC meeting that we will cover as well. I did see Linda Scheiben on the call, I'm going to see if she's still here. Linda, if you have your, oh, there you are. Linda, you should be unmuted.
I'm here, yes.
Okay, if you'd like to give the DPAC report, please go ahead.
We met last week, and both Juliana and Mayor Lucchese and City Manager Yu Haas participated with the DPAC Committee, and our city planner, Rico Tinsman, took us through the first really great process in finalizing or getting closer to finalizing our part of the countywide hazard mitigation plan, or Dunsmere's part of that. And we worked through with Rico all the various hazards that could impact Dunsmere, and we looked at the ratings for those and worked through with Rico, and then he's going to be working with us to finalize that document, look at potential mitigation strategies that would fit in the high priority areas. Obviously wildfire was one of the higher areas, the risk of flooding is a high hazard area that was identified, and we'll be working with Rico, including other stakeholders like Mayor Lucchese and others. Anyone else who wants to join us will be looking at that material and trying to finalize it, and it's Rico's goal to get that done by, before we get into the major wildfire season. And that's about the bulk of the report, I don't know if Rico's at your meeting today, he might want to add something. But the other thing, I notified the group as well, that I am very involved in helping Chief Padilla with a, with improving our fire safe council here in Dunsmere, but before we can actually develop our own fire safe council, we're working with the Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County to submit a very large grant for the, it's a US Forest Service grant to do fuel reduction about 400 acres throughout Dunsmere to improve the evacuation routes in and out of town, as well as some features that we've identified. We've added the Dunsmere Elementary School, and we're looking at other features that we may need to include in the area. So if we get the grant, it's for about approximately $700,000 to $800,000. It'll take a while for them to review the grants and approve it, but at least we've got a really good template, I'm ready to share that, that, almost that final draft with a few of you, and. There, it's due on the 12th of this month, so we still have some time to finalize it. And so that's in the works, and I think that's about it.
All right, thank you, Linda. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Linda Scheiben and the DPAC Committee Report?
I do.
All right, Councilmember Deutsch, go ahead.
Linda, I know it came up when we talked about this during the Community Care Team meeting, but what I'm wondering about is, and maybe it's just opening this up to the awareness of the council, are we planning any kind of green waste event like we had before, you know, with the fact that we're finishing up the cleanup for the spring and moving into the summer?
That was my question, too.
Thank you, that's a very good question, and it's very much of a concern of all of ours, but we, we, we thought that since the budget is pretty limited right now, that we want to work with Ed Valenzuela and go again with the county. The spring county cleanup and the reduced prices at the, at the county landfills were very, very successful, and I know they want to do it again in the fall, and we can help promote that in the fall, but we as the DPAC Committee are not working on a specific green waste event on top of that.
Would you like one?
Well, I was actually just going to step in, I've been discussing with City Manager Yu Haas having another green waste day.
Oh, good.
And we've been, we've been working on looking at the numbers and what the cost of that was previously, and City Manager Yu Haas, you can jump in if you'd like.
I don't have a number yet with Clemmons, but I've been working on them on a very broad issue, she's, Diana is going to be getting back to me.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so we did have that, yeah, we did have that in mind, we were trying to shoot for late May, early June, obviously we are there already, but I'm trying to see what we can do about at least having a reduced day, even if we do have it down here again, and just charge people a couple bucks if they want to bring it down, at least have a central point in Dunsmere, so we are trying to do that as much as we can.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Linda.
Excellent. And let me, let us know if the DPAC Committee can help with any of that.
Sure, thank you so much, Linda. Are there any other questions for Linda and the DPAC Committee Report? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, Linda, for taking the time with us today, and feel free to reach out to council if you need anything else. All right, I'm going to move us to the Finance Committee meeting, so I'm going to go over to Councilman Brian.
Madam Mayor, if I would briefly, there's another committee that did meet since the last council meeting. Councilman Kaisler and I are on the Public Safety Committee that meets quarterly with Representative from the Sheriff's Department and City Manager. Just a quick update on that, and Big Dave, jump in here, help me describe it, but things are going very well with our contract. Increasingly, with a few updates in our substation, officers are choosing to reside in the city while they fill out reports and do work not necessarily associated with Dunsmere, but we have the upside of gaining their patrol hours, they're very nearby, and everything's on track hours-wise. And best news of all, increasingly, it seems that the communication between City Hall and our City Manager and Sergeant Wetstein seems to be very good, which is one of the main points we were hoping for with him coming onboard. Big Dave?
Yep, that's well said, bud.
Thank you. With the Finance Committee, we met three times and trying to work on the budget, we're a little bit behind schedule from where we intended to be, so just be aware that whether it's next week that we have a special meeting or the week after that, there's a high probability that council's going to need to meet several weeks back-to-back to get through the budget and passing it, if we're to do it in time, which would be my recommendation. But from a preliminary standpoint, and it's so hard to know exactly how much of a reduction in revenue we'll receive, from a preliminary standpoint, with just a 5% reduction overall in general fund revenue, it looks like if we keep our $55,000 for community promotions fundings and everything else stays kind of on track, we're looking at $125,000 deficit. So naturally, we're looking to see where we could potentially cut unnecessary things or suspend some things that are of such a nature that they could be suspended and then reinstated easily. Again, though, it could be a greater reduction in revenue, it could be less depending on how things go. One thing relating to that, we don't really have a consensus on a recommendation for the council yet on the overall budget, but we're discussing it and looking at it as we update the projections. But one thing the Finance Committee unanimously recommended, and city staff agrees as well, is for years, we have things like the grater, it's going to cost, you know, $300,000 when it breaks. We don't really budget for those, they're general fund expenses, we just kind of know that we're good at keeping things going longer than they should be going, and then eventually, you know, it does actually need to be replaced. I mean, we just had this with the grater, or no, with tobacco, the grater is another one, but we have, we have a lot of equipment that we know only has a certain lifespan, and our auditor constantly recommends that we include some depreciation in our budget. And unfortunately, this will make it look as if we, you know, are going to have a bigger deficit, but, you know, in the long run, it's just being honest with ourselves that this money will have to be spent. And so to kind of foster transparency and to not hide things and then have emergencies, we all kind of agree, even if it's a conservative number for it, conservative meaning like it's not the full replacement cost of all of our vehicles over the minimum lifespan, but maybe a extra-stretched lifespan, but that we begin the practice of including that depreciation schedule for some of the larger items like the grater.
Okay. Yeah, we should be able to put that on the next agenda and maybe take. Yeah, we, we should be able to put that on the next agenda and maybe take. I think we'll definitely have to have multiple items to talk about different specific finance items.
Yeah, and this was just, you know, staff agreed, and we're moving forward with including it in the draft of the budget. So it'll come up with the budget at council. But just be aware that it's going to be something different that we've never done before in the city that I've seen in our budgets. But both the Finance Director and City Manager, you guys, do you have anything to add to that element of it, or?
I think I'm gonna unmute Blake. Blake?
Nothing to add here. You guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, nothing to add. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Blake.
And then, you know, relative to that $125,000 deficit and Madam Mayor's survey of our citizens and the feedback about, you know, all the services we deem essential and wish to see increase, not diminished in our city. We discussed the tax and kind of, at the time, although one member was absent, unanimously agreed upon, I mean, I think City Manager was in agreement with this, too. The 1.5% is our maximum allowable amount for the sales tax increase. But we recommended, and we can get into the details of it at a different time when we're discussing it. But the, the recommendation going forward is that the amount be 1.5%, not the minimum 1% because of needs coming forward in the Dunsmere's future. The other thing that was discussed was whether to make a dedicated tax, you know, like say law enforcement. One of, you know, public safety was the top on the survey. And I think people feel more comfortable with that, but it requires a two-thirds majority, or 66% plus one to pass, versus undedicated, which is probably less popular in that people feel less secure about where this money is being, where, what it is being raised for, you know, only requires the 50%. So Finance Committee couldn't really come to an exact recommendation on that. We're gonna discuss it again. A member of the public pointed out, and we have explored this. City Manager can jump in and say, well, it's possible. But it may be possible to put both on the ballot at once and say, if, if the higher threshold doesn't pass, the lower one will pass, or whichever one receives the most votes would pass.
So that's confirmed with the City Attorney. We can run concurrent ballot measures, one with a dedicated tax, thinking about for public safety, which would require a 66% approval rating, as well as just a general tax at the same rate with the idea that the money goes again to public safety, but it would end up in our general fund. So it isn't a dedicated tax, but both can be run, and both of them would be slated to cover the same items.
That's great.
There would just be language that if the dedicated one passes, the undedicated one would yield to it, or something of that nature. Because there's a limit on the sales tax.
Okay.
And that was, uh, last Monday. Tuesday, we had a special meeting of the Finance Committee for the applicants to community promotion funds to give a presentation, have questions. And it was a very difficult meeting because of the context of this, this world during and potentially post-COVID-19. And, you know, we essentially, you know, couldn't come to any sort of direct recommendation, though a lot of options were discussed. And there's a lot more public input in this meeting than normal, a lot of really good ideas thrown out and perspectives on, on what would be best for these times. But one thing that was kind of, came to a good consensus with the committee that we didn't vote on it was the need to not promise more than we can give because of the instability it would cause if we, you know, in our enthusiasm, awarded a certain amount because we value it and want to move forward with it. But if we can't, you know, in other words, whatever we award, we intend on, you know, living by for the next year. And that led to, you know, discussion of how the organizations could perhaps adjust their structure to get through this time, and we could maybe, maybe instead of awarding a whole year's worth of stuff to be distributed quarterly, maybe distribute a quarter at a time with the understanding that it's, it's a very, very unknown situation we're entering. If we rebound to normal times, you know, we could potentially take a very large deficit one year. And then passing the tax is the other thing that kind of came up, that, you know, i- if we could be assured that this tax was in fact passed, even though we wouldn't collect it till next fiscal year, I think everyone on council would feel comfortable giving much-needed support, you know, perhaps at a higher level than we could otherwise afford to some of these organizations. So it was thrown out, and we're still discussing it, different options that maybe help bridge these organizations to November, where we know whether we have, you know, the bottom line capacity to help them or not. But everyone, you know, reiterated that we should look for creative ways and continue to brainstorm before next Monday's meeting for the best way to resolve this. Clearly, the, the final decisions on this rest with council. But we're doing a lot of good dialogue on the subject in the meantime.
All right, thank you. And just a reminder to my other council members that this is just committee reports, and these items will most likely be agendized in the future for further discussion. Does anyone have any clarifying questions of Councilmember Brian on the Finance Committee meeting? All right.
Councilman Art, do you have anything to add? You were as great a participant as I in this whole process.
Am I on or am I muted?
You're good.
Oh, good. Well, I turned off Zoom, so I'm just on the phone now. The only thing I would add, and I do not mean to be a pain in the tuchus, is that we are going to need a budget for the airport for the next 24 months. And I hope, because, well, I think we have an agreement between the Finance Committee and the Airport Ad Hoc Committee to go ahead and nail down, it's an enterprise fund, it owes the general fund. We have to create a document to memorialize that. And again, this is one of the biggest items brought up by our independent auditor. And we have to have absolute control over the general fund for the months ahead, no leaks. But the Finance Committee is doing a wonderful job, and to have two citizen participants and the treasurer participating, I think they've been very productive, albeit long meetings.
Right. Thank you. All right, any other questions on the committee or Finance Committee Report? All right, seeing none, we will move now into item number seven on our agendas, which is approval of the minutes. Council regular meeting on May 21st, 2020, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move.
Our minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dave.
I make a motion to approve the minute.
All right, so Councilmember Kaisler has motion to approve the minutes for May 21st, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'll give that second to Councilmember Brian. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself is also an aye, so the minutes are approved. Thank you. Well, now move into item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. Letter A, resolution in support of election consolidation for the election of two city councillors and one city treasurer. Item B is approval of the new DPAK goals and objectives. Item C is the local early action planning grant, also known as the LEAP Grant for the 2022 general plan update. And then finally, item D, which is the approval of the check register from March 21st, 2020 through May 29th, 2020. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to adopt the full consent agenda by Councilmember Kaisler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any discussion on the matter? All right, seeing none.
Councilmember Art, and I want to thank everybody that worked on item 8B and 8C. You know, we're starting to go from being on the floor, just doing the check register, to planning forward, funding forward, and making our community a better place. So I love the community support and staff support we're getting on this stuff.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
You're here.
Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember, the motion at hand is to approve the consent agenda as presented all items. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Big aye.
And myself is also an aye. Consent agenda items A, B, C, and D pass. And we'll now move on to item nine. There are no public hearings. Move us in to item number 10, which is old business. So item 10A is decision on whether to ban fireworks or not, which is a continuation of the discussion we had at the last meeting. So I do have an email from the Chief Padilla, and I'm gonna read that out for the council members in the public right now before. And then I'll move into City Manager Uhas, if you have anything to say in addition to Chief Padilla. Chief Padilla says it was brought to his attention that City Council is considering banning fireworks within the city limits of Dunsmere this year. He would like to share his thoughts and his concerns on the subject. First, this year, the entire country threatened by COVID-19, the concern, the concern of fire administrators have is that a large fire, if it breaks out, they are not sure how they're going to safely house people who are evacuating due to the crowding and clustering. And the firefighters who are responding from the communities up and down the state, and how are we going to safely support them while they fight the fire? It's going to be a logistical nightmare. With certain groceries, food staples, and respiratory PPE being difficult to obtain for local consumers, how are fire management teams going to get adequate supplies to support possibly 1,000 firefighters in the area for a fire? I would be sick if a large fire started in our community that caused widespread devastation, and that cause was fireworks. Second, this year, the United States Forest Service latest prediction shows Siskiyou County classified in, quote, "above normal for significant fire potential," end quote. For the month of July, the reasons are many, but the important reasons are a lack of snowpack and a lack of precipitation during the summer months, which translates into very dry fuels. He has attached some documentation, which is in our agenda packet, which supports this statement. Item number three, Dan has spoken to the Dunsmere Chamber, who had obtained the proper licensing from the State Fire Marshal's Office to sell safe and sane fireworks. They are concerned that if the council decides to ban fireworks, then their sales would be negatively impacted. But most importantly, they do not want to sell fireworks to a resident of Dunsmere where they are knowingly banned. They only ask that if this is the decision to let them know as soon as possible so they can cancel their fireworks order in time. It is Chief Padilla's recommendation that the City Council ban the use of fireworks within the city limits of Dunsmere for this year. The enforcement of the ban might be a challenge to enforce, and would like, are there going to be warnings only? Are there going to be citations? Finds? Question marks? Who is going to enforce law enforcement, Dunsmere law enforcement officer? And I'm sure the county is not going to ban the sales, excuse me, sales or use. I did check with another community close to Dunsmere, and they are not banning the sales or use. Tascana County has banned all sales and use of fireworks for quite some time. If Dunsmere bans the use of fireworks, then at least we can say we did our part to safeguard our community from fire and not contribute to the pandemic, but allow the state to heal. If you require additional information or have any questions, feel free to contact Dan at your earliest convenience. And so that was Dan's input on the item. And so I will now move to City Manager Uhas. Do you have any items that you would like to bring up in relation to the banning of fireworks?
So again, this is my recommendation, and I know that it's gonna disappoint a lot of people. And it just seems like this is one of those years where we're really all having to take a collective hit on our normal activities. But given what I'm seeing from the county in terms of where we are even right now, we are in considerably higher fire danger than we have been in the last five years. Significantly higher fire danger, and I, I just, I, I can completely con- concur with Chief Padilla that it would be in the best interest of the safety of our residents if we ban the use of fireworks this year.
All right. So council members, this is your time for clarifying questions. Are there, Councilmember Deutsch, do you have any clarifying questions?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Brian, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, it's, it's a question. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to go along with the recommendation of the police chief. But I was just wondering to back up. I mean, we're, we know that fireworks have fire and that it's fire danger. But the state of California, in my experience, tends to be fairly conservative when it comes to letting people do things that have fire risk. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's any data to support fireworks being a particular risk to this. And they very well could be. I just, I'm curious if, if there's any connection point to help us feel the strength of this conviction.
Other, the obvious, that projectiles landing on roofs that are extremely dry and the opportunity, or the potential for that fire to spread. And then we have to call outside forces, and we don't have the supplies to make sure that they're okay if they are residing in our city for a while. Well, we're potentially burning. I just, it's just, it's a, it's a bad time. You know, we take calculated risks, but given the supply chain, the extra dryness, and just the potential for extra harm to the community, you know, I, again, I'm in complete agreement with Chief Padilla.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kaisler, do you have any questions before we move into a public comment?
I have to agree with Chief Padilla's recommendation, too. I know it's gonna upset a lot of people, but I'd rather be safe than sorry.
All right, Councilmember Art, do you have any questions before we go into public comment?
No questions. No questions.
All right, thank you. Sorry, there was a chat, so I'm addressing that. And I do not have any specific questions at this point. So I'm gonna open up the public comment section for this item. So anyone who would like to publicly comment on the decision on whether to ban fireworks or not. So there's, I forgot to go through our little spiel. There's two different ways that you can comment. You can either go to the chat function of Zoom, which is gonna be on your toolbar at the bottom of your screen. And you can type in the chat that you'd like to discuss this item, or you can raise your hand if on any of these items. There is one phone number that I'm not aware of if it's linked to an account or not. So I will open up that and see if they'd like to comment. So whoever's on the phone right now, do you want to comment on the decision whether to ban fireworks or not?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Okay, could you give us your name?
Hi, it's Lori Barnes Harley.
All right, go ahead.
Hi there. I think you guys are already aware of how much I love fireworks. But I just wanted to remind you that I spend a lot of money on them locally. And I think the high school also sells fireworks. I didn't hear you mention in the report what they are planning to do, but I think they still sell them unless they've changed their minds. I haven't heard. But I just, I get a lot of joy from them, and I do it very faithfully. And I just really hope that you don't ban fireworks. If the rest of the county doesn't, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. And that is what I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment on this item? Again, you can either, either in the comments, the chat function highlight that you'd like to comment, or you can raise your hand. All right, Linda Scheiben, go ahead. See if that'll work now. Having some issues with the unmute button.
Madam Mayor?
There we go.
Can you hear me now? This is Linda Scheiben. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to comment on the fireworks.
I just wanted to comment on the fireworks situation and have some understanding for those people who are used to raising money for that. I know that's a real challenge, and it's a difficult situation, but it might be easier to swallow if we all remember what happened in 2018 with the Paradise Fire. And not that that fire was started by fireworks, but there have been many fires in California that have. And just a reminder that 100% of our residents live in what's called a very high wildfire risk already. That's designated by CAL FIRE and United States Forest Service and many others. And we are a very high priority in terms of our risk. And so I think when you consider not only the vulnerability of our population during this difficult summer right now, and that, you know, there were 85 deaths in the Paradise Fire. I just think the, we don't want to risk that at this point. And it's just way too risky. I agree with the fire chief that we really should consider banning them. And I don't, is this, this isn't a permanent ban, I would guess? That would be a question I have. You're talking about it just for this season, I believe. So then it could be looked at in the future. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Linda. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the possible ban of fireworks in the city limits? Again, you can either raise your hand or comment in the chat. And I don't see any other phone-only individuals. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move us into council member discussion on the item. And councilmember Deutsch has requested to have the first, first crack. Go ahead, councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I do want to point out something that when you talk about jurisdictions, it's one thing to talk about the legal jurisdictions as to the fact we're in Siskiyou County. But when you look at it realistically, as far as geography is concerned, we're, we're in the upper end of Shasta County's forests. We're the last of the canyon, if you will, where we have a chance to be totally destroyed by a fire moving quickly through our canyon. So that doesn't happen with weed. It doesn't happen with, with Mount Chasta, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that when we think about the potential for fire, we're looking at it not as a Siskiyou County issue, but really as a forest issue that we're in right now. Secondly, I really want to talk specifically to Lori here. And Lori, I know how passionate you are about this. And I do want to iterate that I'm looking at this as being a one-year thing, or at least every year, if we want to, if it's the same next year, revisit it. And I do propose, I do have a proposal. It's been talked about, and I'm willing to raise this as part of the discussion. Suppose we find a way that could work it out with the fire chief that on the Fourth of July, in the ballpark, with the fire chief there and the fire crew around and hoses set up, that you join with Louie Dewey and get your two passions together and find a way to socially distance on that day. That might be an exception. But that would be an exception that would be based upon the fact that it was clearly authorized by the city with the fire chief and everybody else in attendance. But I really cannot imagine hearing fireworks going off in the city throughout this next summer and not worrying about whether it's going to lead to a fire. It really scares me. So that's my comment, and I'll leave it at that, up to the wisdom of the council.
Madam Mayor.
All right, councilmember Kessler, go ahead.
I spoke with Ray Keller, and they didn't have enough time. Number one, after Paradise, no high schools will sell fireworks ever again. Number two, it got turned over to the chamber, and without this decision being made, there was not enough time to place an order. There will not be sale, there will not be local fireworks available here. So with that being said, I, I kind of have to concur with everybody's assessment of the one-year thing, you know. But if, if you and Louie Dewey want to come together and do something, that, that might be something we'd have to look at with the, like Bruce mentioned, with the fire chief and the crew standing by. But, but I know that they're not going to be selling fireworks. And it was a fundraiser. It went from the high school, and it was a good thing, but the high schools are not allowed to sell fireworks anymore. And so it went to the chamber, and the chamber was doing it to help promote the businesses. But like I said, because they didn't have enough time this year, there was no order placed. So there you go.
All right, thank you, councilmember Kessler. Councilmember Brian, do you have any discussion on the matter?
No, I think that prudence dictates that we, I guess, give the fire chiefs, Chief Padiya's recommendation the way it deserves. So I'm supportive of banning it. But if we could come up with some sort of communal firework time or place, I don't know how difficult or expensive that would be. And that might be a nice compromise. But in general, I think perhaps we should move forward with the ban.
Councilmember Art, do you have any discussion? Let me see. Councilmember Art, can you, let me see. Did you get muted? Looks like Councilmember Art might have gotten onto his computer again. Oh, there you go. Councilmember Art, go ahead.
Please excuse my incompetence. Big Dave made the point I wanted to make to Lori that at our last meeting, the understanding was the high school was no longer depending on this as a fundraiser. And with regard to the chamber, I would much rather support a community grant in lieu of them trying to raise revenue by selling fireworks. I don't think they would have made much money anyway, given the tenor of our discussion. So I'm happy to support the ban.
All right. And I'll round us out here. I, and the need and want to be able to do the activity. But unfortunately, just with the circumstances, I don't think I could in good conscience support fireworks sales or use this year in the city of Dunsmere. And I think it does bring up a good point that, you know, Siskiyou County, Mount Chasta, McLeod are so close. I would actually be supportive of also someone making a motion to have me write a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting that they also do a one-year ban, at least in South County, of sales and use. I think this is something we need to talk about as a county as a whole and get everybody on board. I know it's very depressing and really upsetting. Mount Chasta canceled their fireworks for Fourth of July and canceled the Fourth of July. And there's discussion on having a professional show possibly on Labor Day instead. And, you know, I understand wanting to be able to make exceptions so that people can enjoy it. But I wouldn't feel at all making an exception for one member of the public and not another. I think, I think the only thing that I would be supportive of is if it's a fireworks show put on by a since professional. That would make me feel a little bit better because they're trained in how to set up the fireworks appropriately, how to deal with the fire situation. You know, I don't think I would be comfortable with general members of the public being able to do that for this year. And that's just my personal standpoint. But I am also supportive of just a one-year ban on the fireworks, and we'll reassess next spring whether we can, we will be able to do this next year.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, councilmember Kessler.
I have two motions.
All right.
First motion, I'd like to make a motion that we ban fireworks in the city limits. The second motion is I would like to make a motion that the mayor writes a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting that we put a one-year moratorium, one-year ban on, yeah, sales of fireworks in South Siskiyou County.
All right. There's a, so just to clarify, councilmember Kessler, it would be a ban on sales and use of fireworks for one year in Dunsmere?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Right, there's a, there's a, two motions on the table. I'm just going to consider them. One, which is a motion to ban the sales and use of fireworks for one year in the city of Dunsmere and to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors advocating for a one-year moratorium in Siskiyou County. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
All right. Councilmember Deutsch seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch.
I regretfully vote yes.
Councilmember Brian.
Yes.
Councilmember Kessler.
I'm with Bruce. I regret it, but this is what we got to do, yes.
Councilmember Art.
Yes, and because we're into June, I hope we post whatever we do tonight on the website and maybe put something in the newspaper.
Yes, thank you.
Good idea.
And then myself is also an I, so that's unanimous motion carries. We will have a one-year ban on sales and use of fireworks in the city limits, and I will prepare a letter tonight to send to the Board of Supervisors advocating for a one-year moratorium in Siskiyou County as well. All right, thank you. Go ahead, councilmember Kessler.
I just said, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. So seeing no other old business, we're going to move on to item number 11, which is new business. We'll begin with item 11A, which is discussion regarding enforcement of distress building ordinance. And I am going to unmute, city manager Uhas.
Hi, yes. So this relates to concerns from councilman Art about not enforcing the distress building ordinance right now. A lot of, you know, we can point to the person that we would like to target and call him X. But my concern is that we cannot go after one particular person. We need to go after all people with distressed buildings, which we have an inventory of. And my concern about enforcing it right now until we enter phase three of opening is that we need people to register with the city if they have a vacant or distressed building. And they need to attest to them working to either sell that building or working to get a new business into that location. And given that we're in the middle of COVID-19, and we're still essentially under lockdown, the business conditions aren't quite right, that we were, we would be unfairly penalizing people because we wouldn't get people to either purchase or work on a new business strategy right now. And if we were to enforce this ordinance against the most blatant of violators of this ordinance, we would face a discrimination lawsuit very much like weed is facing right now or doing, just as I've mentioned. And so I wanted to bring it up here to see where council is. And obviously, I will take direction from council on where and when you want to enforce this ordinance. I'm proposing that we start with phase three and that we start sending letters out post this meeting to all the folks on our inventory of folks with vacant and distressed buildings, letting them know if they haven't heard about the ordinance and be that they are on our list and will be targeted once phase three is lifted.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to open up for clarifying questions first and then public comment. So I'll begin with councilmember Art. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. My question is, where did the city manager come up with the idea we're targeting anybody? I do not favor discriminating amongst violators of the vacant and empty building ordinance. I expect, having fought so hard for the ordinance we unanimously adopted, the code enforcement officer we funded and hired, the public is expecting us to take care of vacant and abandoned buildings, whomever owns them. Some of these buildings are absolutely empty, and I don't see why we're waiting till phase three to deal with empty buildings with peeling paint on the front and broken windows.
Councilmember Art, really quick, we're just in clarifying questions. We're not in discussion yet.
Where did the idea of selective enforcement against Mark Wares begin?
City manager Uhas.
Oh, in terms of, so the, the, in an email that I received from you, it was clear who you were directing your ire at. And so I'm responding only to what was in your email.
And I'm speaking on behalf of all the people in the council that adopted the ordinance and expected it to be enforced.
So again, councilmember Art, we're in clarifying questions, and city manager Uhas answered it. Do you have any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment and discussion?
No. I have a clarifying question.
All right, councilmember Deutsch, go ahead.
Mr. Uhas, are there other property owners that, how many other property owners would this be affecting that you anticipate? And are there any other ones that might cause us particular concern?
I don't have an exact number, but many.
And so anybody who has that situation then would be expected to go through the same thing as everybody else, right?
Correct. And it's over, I would say, I haven't seen the last tally, but it's between 20 and 30.
Okay, so what you're talking about then is you're talking about 20 and 30 different actions that would have to be taken with 20, 30 different businesses instead of just one person?
Well, some properties are owned by the same party. But there are many different parties that this ordinance would impact. And my concern is that the ordinance requires them to register with the city and pay a fee upfront, and then the clock starts ticking on them upon which either they get a business owner or they get a purchaser of that building in place, or the fine is extremely ratcheted up over time. And I don't, you know, and, you know, again, I take direction from council. But the idea in this environment, when people are not investing in new businesses or starting or willing to purchase new buildings generally, there may be the odd person out there that unfairly penalizing folks that have no chance of meeting the tenants of the ordinance that was passed. It's, it seems to me that it is a hard blow when people are facing hard blows already.
All right. Again, any, any other clarifying questions, councilmember Deutsch?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Kessler, do you have any questions?
Oh, ma'am.
Councilmember Brian.
No questions.
All right. And I do not have it myself. So we're going to move into public comment. So this is the time for members of the general public to discuss the item at hand, which is discussion regarding enforcement of the distressed building ordinance. And we have Tim Holt with his hand up. So I'm going to unmute you. And go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, just in the previous discussion, are two issues. One, under distressed buildings, one is getting buildings fixed up, you know, peeling paint, crumbling plaster, whatever. And the other one is, you know, filling the building with a tenant, with a business. And I understand what the city manager is saying that you can't really expect property owners in the current situation to, to really, you know, find tenants at this point. And I agree with this, this idea that once we get to phase three and businesses can start functioning better, then, then you go out and enforce that aspect. In the meantime, you let people know they're on the list and so forth. So I agree with that part, but I guess I have a question if anybody can answer it, which is, why can't, you know, the owners of these distressed buildings be told they have to fix them up in the meantime? I think work is still going forward, you know, with contractors and so forth. So, so just to sum up. and so forth. So, so just to sum up, I agree with the policy on, you know, getting the approach that the city manager mentioned on dealing with getting tenants for the buildings, but I do have that question about why they can't be asked to fix them up basically now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments on the enforcement of distressed building, distressed and vacant building ordinance? Again, you can either go to the chat function and request to speak, or you can go to the participant option, and you can go into the lower section, and it'll say raise hand, or you can hit the triple dot. I mean, it doesn't look like we have anyone on the phone anymore. So are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this? All right, seeing none, I will, as the public comment and into discussion, City Manager Yu Haas, do you want to tackle the question Tim Holt posed about facade improvements, please?
Oh, sure. So it's both to Councilman Art and to Tim. I want to remind folks that I am the one who introduced this ordinance, and it is the key to getting this city back on track. And before we even put this in place, Weed was our, our lead on this, but Ron Stock, the former city manager of Weed, and I worked on this, but it was his brainchild. Getting to Tim's point, though, about getting on folks with peeling plaster and code, you know, code issues and getting your structure in place, we, we certainly can work towards that end, and I can direct the code enforcement officer towards starting to cite people on those issues, along with sending an educational letter to everybody that's on our list about the ordinance and that their day of registering with the city is coming.
All right, thank you. I'm going to start discussion with Councilmember Deutsch.
Well, I think that if we were to limit this to a specific timeframe, which would be the movement of the county into a Phase Three of the reopening, that would alleviate that particular problem. I do like the way that the discussion is going about reaching out now, getting them on, but we could basically, at the requirement to have somebody in, that clock doesn't start until the Phase Three. But in general, I think that we do want to move ahead. I don't feel that the city manager is doing anything other than being careful about how it's done. And so I'm open to suggestions of how to tailor this particular situation to the COVID-19 world we're living in. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Brian, do you have any discussion on the item?
Um, just a few, I guess, comments. One, you know, I do appreciate with the COVID-19 crisis and the shutdown, how it was impractical and probably unenforceable to pursue these things. I'm eager to move forward, you know, with this ordinance, but I think Phase Three might be the right timeframe for it. As long as, you know, we could start, I don't know where we're at administrative-wise in terms of selecting properties. I like the idea of sending out a letter right away so they know that it's, it's coming pending Phase Three.
I think my understanding and City Manager Yu Haas, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a pretty comprehensive inventory of the vacant and distressed buildings of the city?
I've had it for a month.
Does that include residential as well as commercial?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Brian, was there anything else you had for discussion?
No, thank you for putting together that list, you and code enforcement officer.
Right. Councilmember Kaisler, do you have any discussion?
Yeah. I've been listening to promises and, and, and dreams and plans for eight years. I've never, I've never experienced anybody that has so big dreams that does nothing. So I, I'm all about sending out a letter letting them know it's coming, but uh, you got, I'm not scared of them. I don't dig it. It ain't right. That's all, you know. We need to do something, you know, so. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Art?
Well, having been at this for 12 years since I moved up here, it's clear to me that the city of Dunsmere shies away from enforcing its own laws. It's controversial. It might be adversarial, but the reason the California Theater has the marquee and the paint job is because it took the city intervening with that particular building owner and going to court in Wyreka to have a judge direct that. The reason I raised the Weed article at our last meeting is all five members of the Weed City Council and their city manager and their city attorney and their investigator are united in saying, "We need to get these buildings back into service." And it's not just one building owner. There are any number of speculators that buy historic buildings and let them fall apart. But for those of us, and I'm a little disappointed to hear the city manager say that, you know, things are dead in Dunsmere. Investors are moving and interested in Dunsmere quite a bit for everybody's information, and the more we can turn our dead ugly buildings into productive buildings that create revenues and jobs, as Weed is doing, the better off we are. So I just don't get our hesitation.
Thank you. As far as my discussion on the item, I'm supportive of the work plan that the city manager has put out so far. I would be very supportive of at least moving forward with the facade improvements. I think I do kind of agree with Tim Holt in that, you know, I think we could be doing a couple of other items to help beautify, you know, some of those facades. And I would be also supportive, you know, when you do send those letters to the individuals, if we could maybe identify a couple of different either business loan options or any other type of assistance that is available for those types of improvements, because I think there are some people who just get overwhelmed, and maybe instead of the stick, we might as well offer a carrot as well. You know, if we could just at least point them in the right direction where they can get resources, because I don't want to necessarily put an individual into a situation where they're just getting, you know, fined constantly. And it really isn't a situation of that they don't want to do it, but they just don't understand the resources they have available. So I would be supportive of including some kind of information on where they can get those loans or, or grants from. But City Manager Yu Haas, you want to clarify a point?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Councilman Art's point. So the idea that the city is shying away from conflict, anybody that knows me knows that I love bullies and I eat them for breakfast, and I put this up on the, as an ordinance on my own because I want to see the city succeed. You just can't do it at the wrong time. And so, you know, you know, the mayor's idea of adding some comments about where
We lost you a little bit there with your internet.
additional resources is great, but you can't do it. So your idea, where you can find additional funding, I will add that. But we don't want to be in a position where Weed is now where they're being sued by one party because we're going after folks selectively.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Deutsch, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think that maybe the, the best way to skin the cat here is to recognize Mr. Art's concern, which has to do with the exterior to these buildings. Is there a way that we can take a scalpel here and say that the clock will not be starting until COVID-19 Phase Three, et cetera, et cetera, as far as the need to get somebody in there? But as far as the clock starting, on making sure that maybe even safety inspections or whatever else can start immediately so that everybody has to start right now in terms of doing the fix-up on their exterior? That's just an idea as a compromise.
Councilmember Art, do you want to comment?
No, my only comment is, I appreciate this appearing on the agenda. Madam Mayor, you refer to some sort of a city manager work plan. I've never seen any sort of a work plan. All I'm left with is trying to explain to everybody in the historic district why we're not enforcing the ordinance that we all voted for enthusiastically, whether it is vegetation management or buildings falling apart. I thought that was one of the big achievements for this council is to deal with it quickly and fairly. But I, I would hope this stays on the agenda, and we actually have some sort of a procedure that is fair to everybody but indicates we are going to enforce the laws we just passed.
Well, I don't, I don't, just a really quick, just City Manager Yu Haas, I'm going to take over, because we are just in council discussion. Okay, so to clarify, the, the work plan, in quotation marks, that I mentioned was the staff recommendation to begin enforcing the vacant building ordinance in Stage Three, once we start opening, and then to send letters to those individuals prior to Stage Three identifying that they are at risk of being fined under this ordinance. And it sounded like the city manager was also in favor or able to also begin in doing facade improvement enforcement as part of this as well. So that's kind of what I was referring to, and I wrote those all down in case someone wants to make a motion. But again, you know, we put this on the agenda to deal with it because it's an important piece of business. I would like to hear a motion, how we would like to move forward as a council. So really, right now, I have written down a motion to begin enforcement of the vacancy portion of the ordinance as soon as Stage Three begins for COVID reopening, to begin facade enforcements immediately, and to immediately work on sending a letter to all those on the registry or inventory that's been prepared to let them know that they would be subject to this ordinance and to also include resources for financial assistance to do improvements.
I second that motion.
Okay.
If that's the motion, second it, if it's not, then I'll make it.
Okay. So I guess I'll make that, and then a second by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there a discussion on that motion?
I just have a, perhaps an alternative thought. Because of the unknown nature of when will countywide go to Phase Three, and if we're in the middle of it, and then if Phase Three gets retracted and we're back in Phase Two or something of that nature, do we want to just monitor this directly and say that, you know, send the letters out, and two weeks from now at our next regular meeting, we'll discuss whether we're ready to move forward? Is that something that?
Would you be okay to revisit this in a month? I'm just thinking, because we're going to have budget on the next agenda and be focusing on that.
Well, how about this? Let's do Phase Three. If not, let's certainly keep track of it, because if, if this is the new normal, I think in the current environment, we could move forward with this. But we know that that's uncertain, whether it'll hold or not this current environment.
So basically, we would revisit in a month or revisit at the time of Stage Three? Is that correct?
Stage Three, there's absolutely no reason to not enforce the law.
Correct, yeah, I have that in the, in the motion.
Yeah, but you, you, there's no Stage Three prior to our next meeting. I'd just like to see where we're at with that.
Okay.
But we can make it if you, if you'd like, but I mean, well, we'll know more in two weeks, we'll know more in a month. I don't know whether the governor's going to go to Phase Three or not. No one does.
Yeah, I think a lot of us are questioning. Okay. Well, I'll just have the, I'll work with the city manager to keep us informed on that, either through the weekly reports or having an item on the next agenda just to inform us.
The context of this is many Phase Three businesses in Siskiyou County have been given permission to open.
Oh, okay.
We are not in Phase Three, so it seems like perhaps for reasons of his own, he like lets us go to Phase Three but not officially. So if that continues for several months, I see no reason to not begin the process. But again.
Yeah, we can bring it back if that's the case. I'd be sup- of that. I'd just like to at least make a motion right now for clarity to the city manager of what we'd like, at least at this point. And then if things longer to enter into Phase Three, we can revisit.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
If you want to amend your motion that way, I'll amend my second.
Okay.
That we come back in a month?
Okay. We should know more about Phase Three in a month, and that gives us at least time to focus on the budget. All right, is there any other discussion on the motion of beginning enforcement at Phase Three, just enforcing the vacancy portion of the ordinance to begin facade enforcement immediately, and to send a letter to the inventory, letting them know that they have a vacant or nuisance building, and then include resources within that letter? And to revisit this in a month if we have not entered Stage Three?
Am I muted?
No, go ahead.
That is the only thing, I mean, I appreciate, again, taking the time to start to develop our policy. The only thing I will say with firsthand knowledge, because I own several commercial buildings adjacent to empty buildings, is some of the empty buildings in town are fire traps, and some of them have people staying in them unlawfully. And it's counterproductive to our businesses opening, and it's counterproductive to COVID safety. So I really, I'll take anything I could get, but we're trying to make our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so for fire hazards, the chief, Chief Padilla is basically the, and the building inspector, will enforce the fire code if you do believe there is a fire issue, and that's under those separate codes, and those are not suspended at this point. So if you do have certain properties in mind that you think would be a fire issue, to reach out to City Manager Yu Haas and Chief Padilla, that's a, that's a slightly different situation, and there are codes available that are active now to do that.
Well, I disagree. The, the whole ordinance that we passed on empty and vacant buildings has to do with nuisances and public safety. And now, as Councilmember Kaisler said, we finally have the tools to deal with that, but we don't want to do it yet. I don't want to be going after Mark Juarez for his buildings.
Okay. Councilmember, are there any other councilmembers who have any discussion at the motion at hand?
I would just like to make one thing here clear. Calling out a particular person's name is exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Well, it's not a problem in Weed.
Exactly what we're trying to avoid in terms of a lawsuit.
All right. All right. Is there any other discussion at, on the motion at hand, Councilmember Brian Kaisler? All right, seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself is also an aye, so the motion carries. So just to reiterate again, the motion is to, we will begin enforcing the vacancy portion of the ordinance at Phase Three. We will begin facade enforcement immediately, and we will send a letter to the inventory, the properties identified on the inventory to notice them and to send resources within that letter. And if we are not into Phase Three in one month, we will revisit these, this item. So just to clarify that, and Wendy, I will type that out for you. You do not have to try and get that all verbally. All right, moving on to item 11B, which is the first reading of an ordinance establishing a code enforcement administrative and appeals process. There is There is a request for the city council to approve the first reading of an ordinance that would create an admin site and appeals process for the enforcement of code enforcement violations. This requires amendments to sections 1.09, 8.1, 8.16 and 8.17 of the Dunsmere Municipal Code. And city manager, you have, do you want to give us a background or any information?
You bet. So what we haven't had on our books in the past is for folks that are protesting traffic tickets and other code enforcement violations, the opportunity to appeal any kind of fines or, or tickets they've received. And so what I have requested of Sheriff Lopey is making staff from his office available on every other Thursday in city council offices to hear from folks that want to appeal.
City manager, you have, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, I just, I wasn't sure if you were done.
Oh, yeah. So it's just, it, it's what we need to get on the books in terms of an ordinance that says that, you know, you have an appeals process in place.
All right. Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Arth?
I assume this was drafted or at least reviewed by the city attorney?
I drafted it. It was reviewed by.
I believe that was a yes, councilmember Arth, if you couldn't hear.
No, I couldn't hear that. I didn't know, when I read this, I didn't know it was limited to fines and limited to fines and tickets. And my only concern about this is does it in any way undercut the administrative remedies and the compliance provisions in the vegetation management ordinance or the vacant building ordinance?
No, it probably covers all those. It covers both of those.
You know, it, well, yeah, and that's my concern is, so definition administrative citation, you do facade inspections, you issue an administrative citation, does that get handled under the vacant building ordinance or does it get handled under this ordinance?
So if facade improvements are building code violations, that's different.
Okay, well, that's what you. I, I just don't want to go backwards on the strong sanctions and expedited procedures in the other two ordinances. And this is the slow boat to China, but it's better than nothing.
But it doesn't backtrack on, on code, on building code violation. The building code violation is a building code violation. They're not up for dispute.
All right. Councilmember Keisler, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilmember Brian?
No.
Councilmember Deutsch?
I'm just curious. So we're talking about one side being the, the sheriff's side, the police department for parking and things. Is that right or is this all simply code enforcement?
It is mainly for parking violations, but if there is a, so not building code. But yeah, I mean, so this is parking violations or violations of things like you have a distressed property and you're a hoarder and you're a, an issue for your, your neighborhood. There would be an appeals process for you, but by the time we get to the appeals process, there is so much evidence against you that there is no question. And the idea of having the sheriff in on making these decisions is they know the law and they're not going to give leeway for violations of the law in local municipal code.
Well, I guess what I was just wondering is getting at is, is this going to be a situation where Mr. Allen and the sheriff, somebody from the sheriff's department will sit down together so that they work together on both code enforcement and having the sheriff there? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other clarifying questions at this point? All right. Seeing none, we're going to open this up for public comment. If you'd like to publicly comment on this item, you can either request to through the chat or you can raise your hand through the participants option on the Zoom call. Is there anyone who would like to comment on establishing a code enforcement administrative and appeals process? And we don't have anyone on the phone anymore, it looks like. All right. So we're going to close the public comment on this item and move into discussion. I'm going to start with councilmember Arth.
Uh, no, it's, I think it's necessary and as long as it stands on its own. I simply note that it does talk about public nuisance. It talks about clearing away vegetation. So I'm happy to move the ordinance because we need to get started on the administrative appeal process that we should have had for the past decade, but we've never had.
Thank you. Councilmember Keisler, do you have any discussion?
I agree with you right there.
Right. Councilmember Brian?
No, I can care with what's being said.
Councilmember Deutsch?
If Mr. Arth made a motion, I'll second it.
Council, are you motioning to approve the first reading and move this ordinance to a second reading?
Yes. So moved.
All right. Councilmember Deutsch?
Seconded. I say yes.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading and move this ordinance to the second reading at the next regular meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Arth?
Aye.
And myself is also an aye. The first reading is approved and the ordinance is moved to a second reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and thank you, city manager, you have. We'll now move into item 11C, which is the first reading of an ordinance establishing a new administrative fine schedule. This is a request to the city council to approve the first reading and move to a second reading for updating the fine schedule to better cover the cost of code enforcement hours required to enforcing parking related violations. One thing I would like to point out that I've already pointed out, manager, is we we cannot approve a fine schedule today. What we can do is approve the ordinance which establishes a fine schedule through resolution. Before you set fines for tickets and different processes, you have to do a hearing so that the general public can speak up on the fines themselves. So just to educate the council members, approving the exact numbers today. And we're just discussing the ordinance to establish a fine schedule process. Has anything else you'd like to bring up?
Um, no, that's, other than clarification that this fine schedule under California vehicle code is updating it according to what was approved in 2019 by the state and other fines, this is the same table that's, by the way, is in the ordinance right now. It is a slight increase for some of these fines. It's in keeping with what we just adopted. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions, councilmember Deutsch?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Brian?
No.
Councilmember Keisler?
No.
Councilmember Arth?
Well, I, just one, and in the staff report, staff has suggested we adopt Mount Chastis parking fine schedule to help be better cover the cost of city code enforcement officer's salary. It, it, do we, what percentage of the fines does the city of Dunsmere retain?
In, so, go ahead.
I was going to say, so if this is adopted at the same time as the administrative process, the city of Dunsmere would retain all of it. So one of the advantages of having an admin site process is you don't involve the court fees or anything else at the Siskiyou County Court System. So we would, so if a, for example, a parking ticket is given out and the individual pays it, we receive 100% of that.
And it would help fund our code enforcement efforts.
Yes, it would basically be sent to the general fund.
Yeah, it wouldn't cover it, but it would, it would take us a lot further.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I'm going to move us into public comment. Is there any public comment regarding an ordinance establishing a new administrative fee schedule? All right, there's chat. So again, if you would like to comment on any of these items, you can go to the chat function on your toolbar and you can put into the chat function that you'd like to be unmuted. Or you can go to the participants option and then at the participants window, it should say raise hand. If you're going to be raising your hand, it'll put you to the top and I'll unmute you for your public comment time. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public comment section for the first reading of this ordinance and move into councilmember discussion. Councilmember Arth, would you like to start us off?
Uh, I think this is another indication of progress. Thank you to staff. Thank you to everybody.
Councilmember Keisler?
I agree. Are you ready for a motion?
If you'd like to make one.
So what am I going to put this? Motion to approve ordinance adopting and administrative citation process?
Sorry, it would be a motion to approve the first reading and move the ordinance to a second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve the first and move to second reading. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Councilmember Arth has, has seconded. Any other discussion? All right. Then we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Arth?
Aye.
And myself is also an aye. The motion carries and we will move this ordinance to the next reading. So that should cover item, all items and new business. And we are now into future add-on to items. I just put an item on the, the PowerPoint. Hopefully at the next meeting, I assume at the next meeting, if not sooner special meeting, we'll be doing budget discussions and adoptions. Obviously, obviously not in one meeting. But that's the main item I have for future agendas in the next couple of meetings. And I'm going to be working with the city manager to try and keep those meetings pertaining mainly to the budget discussion. Is there anything else to discuss your agenda items?
Yes. We need to put on the next agenda that we are putting a one and a half percent TUT increase on the ballot to competing. One is a special tax for public safety and one is a general tax with the intention of the sales tax going to public safety. Also revisit community promotions funding in terms of a decision and that's what I've got. And also, there'll be, there'll be also code enforcement tweaks to certain, to tighten up language to ensure that when we are ticketing folks that, that there isn't room for maneuvering in loopholes.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Brian, did that cover most of what we can expect for budget discussion and finance discussions?
It does, but I just would like to reiterate that the, the discussion of discussion of community promotion funds without really a deep in-depth discussion of the budget prior to that isn't really going to help us. So we kind of need to do those together. And that's a lot for one meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe what we can do is discuss the overall budget after our next meeting with the TUT increases. And then the second meeting or schedule a meeting to go through the budget and or at least get some peripheral questions out of the way and then talk about community promotion. Does that sound okay to do over two meetings?
It does.
Okay. And then whatever, then in addition to whatever other recommendations or comments from the finance committee as well, of course.
One comment is that in terms of a TUT increase to make sure that we meet the deadline for the county, we need to make a decision at the next meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will, we'll make sure to have that.
Okay.
What will be?
Question on that, question on that?
Sure. One second. And the city manager, I think if we're going to be made to make a decision in one meeting on that item, that our staff report needs to be very robust. The detail there. So I'm just going to request that that's a report that Blake and yourself put together with John Kenny. Just that request. But councilmember Deutsch?
Well, I just had, the question I'm faced with right now is, as I understand it, the people who are going to be promoting this cannot be the council itself and cannot be the city itself. So how, how does the formation of a group that might want to support this? Do we have an idea of how that happens and how we as a council, you know, hand this off to somebody like that?
Well, we individually can as members of the public. We just can't spend city funds and we can't use the city to, you know, do printing or anything like that. So one of the things we'll have to discuss is if we do move forward with the TUT increases on the ballot at the next meeting, that'll be part of our discussion is how we'd like to divide ourselves up. And we'll probably collectively as individuals have to mobilize people. So we'll, we'll add, we'll have that in the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good point. Are there any other future agenda items? I think that covered quite a bit for the next two meetings.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have a constituent and after speaking with him, I, I have some concerns myself. I was just, I was wondering if I could, if we could discuss the status of Nathaniel's cannabis application and his deposit.
Okay. What I can do is have city manager, you have, type up a report for us. And then if you feel like it should be an item that should be agendized, we'll talk about that after the update report comes out. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Any other future agenda items? All right. Go ahead, councilmember Arth.
Well, once we get done with the budget, which is the absolute top priority, I do hope we can put together a joint session with the members of the planning commission based on the vision, whether we do another vision mailing or not, but to start planning for downtown issues. Everything from, do we really want a historic district? How should it be run and overseen? Parking issues, there's a lot of potential planning. And the members I talked to on the planning commission are as thrilled about Rico Tinsman as we are. So I hope if the wheels don't fall off the wagon, we could get to this in sort of the July, August timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll take a look. One of the things I have as a note for myself, as well as to check in with city manager, you have, we had given him those three to six month priorities for the city over COVID-19. And so I think getting an update on how those are going. And if we've taken out a majority of those and the city manager feels that we have the resources to move forward with new projects, we'll, we'll do that. One of the things I'm also weary about, about using Rico a lot on projects that are city sponsored is that that funding is coming out of our general fund. So we have to be very strategic about how we use Rico on some of these projects because we would basically be paying him for a project we don't have an established revenue source for, if that makes sense. So I'm, I'm going to look at what our priorities are right now. That's on the list. So I have it written down and we'll get back to the council with an update on how the. on how those, those current goals are going and if we can afford in July to move forward with others.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, go ahead.
Besides Mr. Tinsman, do you know anybody else in the area that knows much about planning?
No, I have no idea. You could probably ask Siskiyou County, but planners like flies, so, um. Anyway, all right. Any other items? I think that's quite a bit for us tonight and I'll get back with everybody, um, with the city manager. To move us into item number 13, which is adjournment. So again, for any questions related to any of the items presented and discussed today, please email, uh, Todd, you have city manager, um, or Wendy at admin assistant. They'll be able to make sure to get you information as well as the recordings. But as for tonight, uh, gentlemen, if you're.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, there's a motion to adjourn, second?
Yes.
Uh, I'll second it. Before everybody signs off, I do have a new email address. I've switched to Gmail and the staff very kindly put it on the city website, so I won't burden you with it.
All right, thank you, council member Art. All right, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, no nays, so we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and members of the public who joined us.